That's been my comment with the white beard and the weight I've gained. Now, I'm going to be Santa Claus come Christmas. That's right. There you go. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, this is just because of all this here lately. So I haven't gotten a haircut. I haven't shaved, so.
See, it's better if you hadn't grown the beard. Like, it would look.
Right. Yes, it would look worse. This draws the attention. Yes.
May 4, 2020, regular session of the Cameron City Council will now come to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge.
Flag of the United States of America.
The Republic.
Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair Dennis Clark.
Here.
Becky Curtis.
Here.
Julie Ossman.
Here.
Ray Esposito.
Here.
Are there any requests to move items from the consent agenda to the regular agenda for discussion? Seeing none, Shelley, would you please read the items?
Item A, motion to approve the minutes of the April 20, 2020, regular session. Item B, motion to accept this certification of the Lingua Tactus.
I will entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. It's now time for the city manager's report.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I had four things I wanted to mention. The first thing is the city council goal. We have the eight goals from last year, and we're going through those one by one. And we're getting them to you all and getting the approval of our council of those goals. The two that we're working on now is the salary and pay matrix. And we've contracted with the Austin Peters group to do that. We're in the process of doing that now. They're interviewing employees and they're doing our comparable with other cities. We should have that sometime soon, but before we begin the budget process for next year. The other one that we're working on is an economic development plan. And we're working with Tim and with the Chamber and Terry Rumbery to put that together. And it will be short and specific. We're going to have things in there that we can actually accomplish in the near term, two to three to five years. We're not putting a lot of stuff out there that's pie in the sky. So we've got that drafted up and look forward to bringing that back to you very soon. So that gets us through many of the ones that we can get done now. Some of them will remain for a couple of other things that we have to do. For example, the utility study. That's waiting on some other things. But we'll bring those up to you as soon as we can get them. In anticipation, though, of the next golden objective meeting, we'd like to have all of those done that we can get done as hardly as we can get. Right now, we've still got our next golden objective meeting scheduled for Saturday, June 27. That seemed like it was a long way off when we started talking about this. But now what we've got is with the lockdown, kind of as anybody's guess, we're not sure how that will work. But we're still about six weeks off, so we're planning for that. And as things change, if we have to, we can change that vote. Ask everybody to tend to the lockdown for Saturday on the 22nd. We'll do that again at the elements exactly.
27 or 27?
27, 27. And we still have the election schedule for June 6. We haven't heard anything about that. People ask us what we're doing or how we're planning for it, but the election commission is doing that. And we believe that they're setting that up and they'll do that with whatever social distancing they need. But there has not been any change to that, as far as we know, so that is still on. So that means we would have an emergency or a special meeting Monday after that to confirm the election and to elect a new mayor, Mayor Prokian. Okay, so that would be where we are in golden objectives here in the next couple of weeks. The next thing I want to do is talk about the sales tax decrease. And the sales tax decrease is a problem because we have so many businesses now that are not functioning as normal. And so there's a decrease in sales tax that we'll be getting. We've estimated that to be 20% of our sales tax. And what 20% sales tax will mean is it will affect the stormwater fund, it'll affect the parks fund, it'll affect transportation. But all of those are some things we have control over because we can reduce the amount of money we spend in those funds. We could not do some projects. The one that we don't have much control over, though, is the general fund. And in the general fund, we have about $1.2 million of tax dollars in the general fund. If we reduce that by 20%, that means that we'll be about $250,000 short in the general fund. Now, to make up for some of that, we have got some of our city money that was paid in protest and then released to the tune of $154,000. So that makes us about $90,000 short, $96,000. And as we approach this budget, we're hoping that we will get some of that century length money released. And we could get as much as another $100,000 out of that, and that would help make it up for this. And that might take care of the decrement that we'll have in sales tax. But we only have still a $90,000, $95,000 decrement. We can work through that and we can accomplish that when we come through the budget. So I wouldn't worry about that right now. It's a decrease in sales tax, to be sure, and we're concerned about it. But we think we'll be able to cover that okay. Then, speaking of the budget process, the way that will begin here is we are now sending out worksheets to the staff in the finance department to begin to work through their budget process. And by the middle of next month, in June, we'll have those back to the staff. We'll begin to draft a budget and bring it back to the finance committee in mid-July. And when we work through that, we'll bring it back as a draft to the full council in mid-August. So those kind of four months lined up is where we are in the budget. And then when we get through that, we'll know where we are in sales tax and we'll also know where we are in the salary matrix. So all of that is coming together now, and we'll let you know as we proceed on it. And the last thing I wanted to talk about is the two ordinances we've got. We've got the one out here that you'll see tonight, and that is the ones that are postponed on the animal quarantine. They're on the agenda, and so we know we have to handle those. We have a policy and procedures committee scheduled for this Wednesday, May 6 at 1:00 p.m. And we'll handle the details of that on the quarantine policy. Because that was postponed, and so we still got it here, and we need to handle it, and we will. However, the spay-neuter one will take a little bit more work, and we would like to get a lot of public participation in that. And so we're going to wait until hopefully we can open up the council meetings more to more of the public, and then we can have more public debate on that because that is a more complicated one. It's an emotional issue, but it's not urgent. We don't need to work on that right away. We'll get to it here soon as we open up. But the quarantine is a little more urgent because we have that on the agenda, and those have been postponed. And we would like to get that resolved this week if the policy procedures committee bring it back the next week.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Is Terry Rumbery here with an update?
He is not, and I think if he wanted to zoom in on it, he said he was not going to be able to do it tonight, but he did not have anything new for me to pass on.
It's now time for unfinished business. Bill 2020-11 and Bill 2020-12 has been postponed. We will now have a second and final reading on Bill 2020-17.
Bill 2020-17, an ordinance for the city of Cameron, Missouri approving and accepting an agreement to sell real estate to Quality Traffic Control Investments LLC, QTC, to expand operations at the Cameron Business Park.
I will entertain a motion to pass Bill 2020-17 on a second reading.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I am here to answer any questions that we might have on that. But I did want to let you know we do have a final signed contract for them, and they are anxious to move forward on it. So we're ready to go with that. That'll be another business of the business.
I might just say too that there's an addendum to this final reading that wasn't at the last reading. The addition to the contract that you wanted to explain.
We added language as part of the sale of the property that they can't turn around and sell the property for, you know, just to make a profit. So we put words, verbiage in there that states that we would not issue first right of refusal. If they want to sell or transfer the property, they have to give first right of refusal to purchase the property back for $1,000. And that is, all goes away once they receive the final certificate of occupancy for the building. And also, they have to construct the building. Like Steve said, they're ready to go. They're ready to contact your builder.
We don't think any possibility of that, and they're ready to go. Just to make sure that something, if they wanted to buy that for $10,000 an acre, well, if they wanted to do that, we'd get the right first refusal to buy it back at the same price we've got. And that's just a practice.
Proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. I will entertain a motion to pass Bill 2020-17 on a second reading by roll call.
So moved.
Second. Shelley?
Dennis and Clark.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julie Ossman.
Yes.
Roy Esposito.
Yes.
Darlene Breckenridge.
Yes.
It is now time for new business. We will have a first reading on Bill 2020-18.
Bill 2020-18, an ordinance authorizing the city manager, the city of Cameron, Missouri, to enter into an agreement with Blue Nile Contractors Inc. to complete the Bob Griffin Road sewer main extension project.
I will entertain a motion to pass Bill 2020-18 on a first reading.
So moved.
Discussion?
Forgive me if I don't stand up. I don't want to trip and fall and take something out here. So, but again, this is just the contract at the last meeting. We approved the resolution awarding the bid to Blue Nile Contractors for the completion of the sewer main extension. Basically, kind of from the wastewater treatment plant over to Bob Griffin Road. Again, Blue Nile was the lowest qualified bidder at $249,000, just over $249,000. So HDR put together the contact documents, and this ordinance will authorize the city manager to sign those. And we can get started with that project.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. We will now have a first reading on Bill 2020-19.
Mayor, I'll need to recuse myself on this.
I will now entertain a motion to pass Bill 2020... Oh, you need to read it. Sorry.
Bill 2020-19, an ordinance authorizing the city of Cameron, Missouri to enter into a contract with the Cameron Municipal Band.
I will now entertain a motion to pass Bill 2020-19 on a first reading.
So moved.
Sorry.
Discussion?
I wanted to point out that the band contract is up for renewal, and the term would begin on May 1, 2020, and terminate on April 30, 2021. Of course, what we have is in our period of social distancing, so the band is not operating right now, but they will operate soon. Operating as the, at least the stand-in or the acting business administration is Ann Clark. And so we invited her to come and give you a quick rundown of what their proposal is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Like everyone, we have issues of social distancing to address. And our board met via Zoom about a month ago and determined that we would, you know, just for now, plan, or at that time, plan for a regular season, but wait and see how things played out. Upon visiting with the city manager, Ossman, last week, my brother David, who's doing well, by the way, proud to report, he's cancer-free, and I met with the city manager. And I shared this with our board, that a decision was made that in order to be particularly prudent with members of the band and to protect our audience, although with that big of a park, their ability to social distance is probably possible, but under the band shell for the band, it would be virtually impossible. So we made a decision to, at this point, delay the start of the season until July 2, which would be the Thursday night, of course, prior to July 4, thinking then that we were able to get six concerts in, July 2, the last one being on August 6. So that would truncate our season by four concerts. I've spoken with Alan Reed, who's the head of the American Legion, about the band not participating, as we have for many years in the Memorial Day program. And he is in a state of uncertainty himself as to how that will go forward. But I think everyone is leaning on the side of being prudent with everyone's health. And so that is why our decision was made to go with the shorter season. It would be the six concerts, and then again, all things going well, doing a concert in December, like we have. So the total number of concerts would be seven this year, plus our special 4th of July, which would be the morning performance at the Veterans Memorial and the parade. So it's regretful that we have to do that, but we think it's kind of the best decision we can make at this time. So, did you may have any questions?
No, we just want to thank you.
Well, thank you.
You know, we're one of the very few that has this band, and we're proud of it.
We're proud to continue a strong tradition. Thank you for hearing me today.
I would like to point out one other thing, if I could. The band is supported by an actual property tax level voted on by the public in, I think, 1927. And that current rate is .0935, which doesn't mean much to most people. Except what it does is that raises about $90,000 annually. And in consultation with the and the business director, we think that the budget for this year will also be about $90,000. So that will work out with time for the year.
Thank you. Okay, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Four in favor, one abstention. Someone will call Councilman Beckett. We will now have Resolution 2020-16.
Resolution 2020-16, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Missouri approving budget adjustment free for the budget year of October 1, 2019, to September 30, 2020.
I will now entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2020-16.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Madam Mayor, Council, what you have is budget adjustment number three for our current year. The staff and finance committee met about two weeks ago and went over this budget adjustment. This adjustment wraps up or finishes up some projects that we've had going on in the city for approximately 18 months to two years. Some of our projects do carry over into the next fiscal year. We are refunding the final payments and closure of the airport hangar renovation project. So the construction was basically done last fiscal year, but all the paperwork and closeouts of the grant reimbursements was in this fiscal year. We also received some news coming through MoDOT that we received some FAA credit through the CARES Act for approximately $30,000. These funds, we believe, are just for basically operation costs. And there's, so we are hoping to use these funds to help cover just regular ongoing operational costs, and there's no additional match required. So then we have the sewer department had budget adjustment. We are doing the Ashland Drive, and there was sewer line improvements there. And we're also doing the Blue Nile-Gabroson project that you just voted on. So in order to encompass all of those funds, we went and did a budget adjustment for that. The completion of the Grandin Walnut pedestrian improvements. That, there again, when the planning, the planning part of that project started in, like, fiscal year 18 and 19. The construction and reimbursement is all occurring this year. And there's been some changes in maybe some of the MoDOT communications and in the funding. So we had to make the budget adjustments to recognize the changing in their funding program. Then the last big thing in this budget adjustment is the park board or the park fund. The sale of the Park Valley complex did occur in the last fiscal year. The sale, the contract for the sale. But we had to record the financial aspects of that in the current fiscal year because that is when the cash transaction and the transaction was completed. So we knew about this, but when it occurred, we thought we could book it into last year, but we found out that we couldn't because the cash transaction actually took place in current fiscal year. The payments have been made on schedule, and I believe there is still one other payment for next fiscal year. That's what this entails, the numbers add up. Right quickly with some of these projects. But the projects are all in completion. And Finance Committee said, you know, they gave us our approval to bring it to you tonight.
I could add two other things to that. One of the things which makes this pretty good is that the expenditures were $716,000 during this period of time in these funds, and the revenues were $763,000. So it's not that we're asking to come back and take money out of reserve to put into the funds. There's enough money in the fund that has got to be allocated to the right funds to which they need to come out of. The second thing that I wanted to report back to Council is the Director of Public Works tells me that we do have the $200,000 reimbursement for the trail grant from DNR, but we don't have it in the account yet.
Correct.
But the check is on the way. I've been checking all day long to see if they're... I was hoping I would be able to report to you that it's in the band.
So it is on its way. It's not the same old, same old, the check to the mail, and it never comes.
Approved, and they've cut the check.
Just checking, because that was going to be one of my questions.
And that transaction, when it comes, will not be reflected in the budget because it's already been revenue shown in the budget, but it will be an increase in the fund balance of the general fund.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. It's now time for miscellaneous from staff. And I'm just going to go down the list, because some of you are here, some of you are in the Zoom and meeting. Steve, do you have anything?
I do have one item, and I think Tim was going to come down, so he's on Zoom. I just want to ask one thing, and that is, you know, we've tried to do the city council meeting here on Zoom. We're doing it downstairs here so we can get some social distancing, although, of course, it doesn't allow much of the public to be here. So another good suggestion was made was we use the auditorium over in the superintendent's office. And then we could put the council up on the platform, on the stage there. And then we could use the seating and put as many people as you want. We just allow, you know, nobody closer than 10 feet. And then maybe what we could do is we could do kind of regular city council meeting. So we're doing it different each time, or experimenting around to do it. So I offer that suggestion to you and see what people might think about it for the next meeting. I don't think we're back to normal by then.
Yeah, but don't we have to be still under 10? Not really.
No, no, they extended that out. And the last thing they said was 25, is what was in the guide. And if we do it with more than six feet apart, then we probably have a bigger city council meeting.
Don't find me.
Well, maybe what I'll do is I'll start working with the superintendent and see if we can do that, and once available, and we'll see if we can work that out. We'll make sure. I will physically talk to each person before we do that so there won't be any misunderstanding about where we are. Okay, good, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Shelley? The only thing I have is just a reminder that we do have a public works committee meeting tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. And a policy and procedure committee meeting on Wednesday at 1:00 p.m.
Public Works at 4:00 or 2:00?
4:00.
Shelley? I was going to say, my calendar says 2:00.
I think the agenda is in that, so 4:00.
That's fine with me.
I can't be...
Okay, Drew is up.
I can't be there. I can't be there at 4:00. I have another appointment tomorrow. Mine says 2:00.
I thought we said 2:00 as well.
Your agenda or your email?
My email.
The agenda that I got, I think, said 4:00.
I can't be there at 4:00.
I will double check, but if that's... We'll have to reschedule it because it's too late.
Just thought to show you, if you would, please. Thank you.
Tim, you want to go ahead?
Yeah. I just wanted to update you guys on the Cameron Main Street. I know this month was supposed to be celebration of the preservation month. You know, with all the pandemic COVID-19 stuff going on, we basically moved that date. Our preservation date was set for May 30. It was a pop-up type celebration. So we're going to condense that into the 4th of July celebration. We're going to continue with that, you know, planning for that. Cameron Main Street ain't just going to be the lead in that, but the city's still going to be in a supportive role. You know, we're going to have a fireworks celebration. We have two people working on the design team, getting all that information organized. So it's not final details right now, but once I have the final details, I'll share it with you guys. Another thing, please don't forget, if you haven't already completed your 2020 census, I got an email from Sue Jackson. The state of Missouri response rate is 56.3%. The state of Missouri is 57.4%, and the national rate is 56.3%. So I think we're doing a pretty good job as far as compared to the nation. So again, if you haven't already completed your 2020 census, you can go to their website and do it online. I think they mailed out hard copies. If you don't respond, they're probably going to send somebody to your house or give you a call or something. So that's it.
The Main Street wanted to kind of make the 4th of July as the goal for this. And the band is having their first meeting on the concert on the 2nd of July. And we're trying to have our golden objective on the 27th of June. So it looks like kind of that 1st of July is when things are going to get a little bit more back to normal. But all of that now is building up to that, and it may be if we get closer, you know, towards 1st of June, we have to delay some of those things. But it looks like the 1st of June is when things go.
Chief Bachelor, do you have anything? Is Donald on here?
I don't see him on here.
We had a big fire today.
Okay, is Drew on?
Drew, are you up?
Drew is on here.
I am. I don't have anything. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay. Zach?
No, ma'am.
Herman? How about you, Patrick?
Nothing.
Okay. Now time for miscellaneous from Council. Councilman Clark?
I have nothing.
Councilman Curtis?
I'm good. Anybody else done wrong? I'm so happy. I'm just grateful that people are opening back up and... I'm just grateful that people are opening back up, and we're all excited to see how this goes, and just let us know whatever we can do to help you guys understand things. Thanks.
Councilwoman Estes?
I have nothing.
Okay, Councilwoman Ossman?
I don't have anything.
Hey. Now, I want to express my heartfelt thank you to our citizens and the way they have had and continue to display true concern, not only for their well-being, but those of their neighbors. It is my hope that we continue our social distancing and abide by the new normal for the time being. We are officially open as a city, and I want all citizens and businesses to know that we, as a council, are thinking of the health and economic prosperity of this community. And that's all I have, and I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.